Good evening and welcome to the July 23rd, 2024 regular session of the Mayor and City Council for the City of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And first, we will have invocation given by Councilmember Schindler and followed directly behind that will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Honorable members of the Hagerstown City Council, esteemed guests and cherished community members. As we gather here today, let us take a moment to reflect on the strength and potential that comes from true collaboration. In a world where individual efforts can only take us so far, it's our ability to work together that truly propels our community forward. May our discussions and decisions today be infused with the spirit of cooperation and mutual respect. Let us remember that every voice in this room brings unique insights and valuable perspectives. And it's through the combined efforts that we can achieve our best outcomes for Hagerstown. In the face of the challenges and opportunities before us, may we approach our responsibilities with open hearts and open minds. Let us listen actively, engage constructively, and strive for solutions that reflect the collective wisdom and aspirations of our diverse community. As we deliberate, may we be inspired by the idea that collaboration is not just about working together, but about understanding each other, building trust, and fostering a sense of shared purpose. Let us recognize that our greatest success will come from our ability to unite and harness the strengths of every member of our community. Let our efforts today lay the foundation for enduring partnerships and a legacy of cooperation that benefits all who call Hagerstown home. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements, rules and procedure effective December 15th, 2020. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for August is Tuesday, August 6th, 2024. Work session at 4:00 PM. Tuesday, August 13th, we have a work session at 4:00 PM. Tuesday, August 20th, we have a work session at 4:00 PM. And then Tuesday, August 27th, will be our regular session at 7:00 PM. And we have some guests here for Historic Preservation Awards. We have Steve Bachmiller.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Bachmiller. I'm the Development Review Planner and Zoning Administrator for the city. And as part of my job, I'm to stay up to the Historic District Commission. May is Historic Preservation Month as every year, and the commission selects various projects that have been completed in the prior cycle to recognize for additional recognition for the quality of the results. And we actually have a bumper crop this year, a total of eight awards. We'll present them in seven groups because two of them are actually related to one another with the same applicants. So we'll do those two at the same time. At this time, I'd like to invite Leslie Allen, the Vice Chair of the Historic District Commission, to join me and the mayor as well. And we'll start walking through these. Excuse me, one second. Hey. Well, we had a slideshow. So what we'll do is we'll move along without that. Just want to point out a few things. There's actually just now we did have it. Okay. There's a distinct theme this year, and that theme is historic preservation's economic development. Historic preservation is one of the many tools in our toolbox that fosters economic development here in the city. Just a few points that over 50 Maryland county cities and towns have created over 108 local historic districts to stabilize and protect the character of communities, capitalize on those resources, and ensure predictability for those considering new investment community. Preservation also stabilizes environments attractive for reinvestment and protects the impact of tax funds and capital invested in the immediate area from incompatible development. Preservation also creates jobs and traffic criticals of vitality of downtown areas. And as a sign of how important this is, every county in Maryland but one has local historic districts that are administered by the county and or its towns. 16 of 24 Maryland county seats have areas protected by historic districts. And of the few that don't, most of them appear to be situations where the downtown area was heavily redeveloped in the late 20th century, and there wasn't a whole lot of historic resources there, or the town is so small that they don't have the staff to support such an effort. But so historic preservation is part of economic development. The first awardee this year is for the Up the Graft Glove Factory. The recipients are Blackthorne Capital Partners, the developer, and also their architects and general contractors. So if y'all could step forward, please. And the mayor will just read one of the three. They're all the same. So read it into the record.
2024 Outstanding Rehabilitation Project. The Hagerstown Historic District Commission hereby recognizes Blackthorne Capital Partners, developer, the architectural firm of Road and Delaria facade and the vector of being general contracting for the rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of the former Up the Graft Glove Factory building. Through their efforts, this commercial and industrial building and upper floors of which had remained vacant for many decades have been rehabilitated for upper floor dwelling units and first floor commercial units. This effort served as an important cornerstone to the revitalization of the historic downtown commercial core of the city and is shining example of the use of incentive programs for economic development coupled with historic preservation. Thank you so much for your investment.
Thank you.
We're getting paid.
Here we go. If it smiles, one, two, three. Okay.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Okay, the next one is the Historic Dutch Kitchen Restaurant. Giovanni Diaz is the owner and proprietor of the property and the new business that's going there, which is a new restaurant with Puerto Rican cuisine. Dutch Kitchen is a rather interesting building. It's actually one of the oldest buildings in our downtown. It's probably about 200 years old underneath with all of that facade there. It dates to roughly around 1810, 1820-ish. And then the facade that we see that we're familiar with, the Dutch Kitchen part of the history of the building goes back close to 100 years as well, back into like the late 1920s or 30s. We're not exactly sure where, but that was all part of what's now the historic fabric of the building. But Mr. Diaz purchased the property and has been renovating it for reoccupancy with his new restaurant, which is going to create a new chapter in the history of restaurants in this building. And hopefully it'll be there for a long time. So if you'd like to step up.
So I have a Historic Preservation Award for you for 2024 Outstanding Renovation Project. The Hagerstown Historic District Commission hereby recognizes Mr. Giovanni Diaz for your project renovating the exterior front facade of the former Dutch Kitchen Restaurant building at 10 East Washington Street. This project improved and upgraded the appearance and historic nature of the Circa 1930s facade and the Circa 1810 building in a way that recaptured its appearance as a predecessor predecessor restaurant throughout much of the 20th century, as remembered by local residents. At the same time, it creates a new chapter in the building's history with the introduction of your Puerto Rican cuisine and downtown restaurant economy. And I can't wait. Thank you for your investment in downtown Hagerstown much.
Okay, give me good smiles and one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next project we have is the Fairgrounds Entrance Building and Residence. This is a property that's been owned by the city for a number of years as part of our development of Fairgrounds Park. This building goes back into the late 19th century. It was also funded with state funds and the building was starting to need some repair. So the city contracted with PBI Commercial Contractors to do exterior renovations on the building and did a lot for securing it. It's amazing what a coat of paint can do for a frame building because you want to make sure that that wood material stays protected. But this was such a good job that actually the Maryland Historical Trust, the state agency, actually presented an award to the city for this particular project as well. So for that, I'd like to invite Ford City Engineer Jim Better.
He must not know. But the Hagerstown Historic Preservation Award for Outstanding Rehabilitation Project for 2024. The Hagerstown Historic District Commission hereby recognizes the City of Hagerstown. Its parts in engineering staff and PBI Commercial Contractors for the exterior rehabilitation project completed on the Washington County Fairgrounds Entrance Building and Residence. Through their efforts, this iconic structure has been preserved and protected from the imperiation for years to come and preserves an iconic structure in the institutional history of the city and county. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, the next one we have is Historic Restoners or Rezners Confectionery. This is an example where historic preservation and economic development can go hand in hand. The city has, when it comes to our design guidelines for renovations of historic buildings, we have very accommodating guidelines when it deals with things like replacement windows. Many historic districts would require you to do wood. Our Historic District Commission guidelines do not do that. And in this particular case, the property owner, TBB Properties, needed to replace the windows that were on the second and third floor levels. They were probably 30, 40-year-old metal windows, single-pane windows. And they submitted a proposal which was that met the design guidelines. What typically happens is that we check to see what the historic window pattern may have been, if there's replacement windows. And in this particular case, we did find historic photographs of the building. This is from a parade taken sometime in the 1890s showing six over six windows. So they came in with modern metal replacement windows, but with six over six grills on it. And it does a lot to improve the overall appearance and be more compatible with historic nature of the building. So with that, Mr. Bone here. Yes.
2024 Outstanding Renovation Project. The Hagerstown Historic District Commission hereby recognizes TBB Properties LLC for its window replacement project on the former, and I heard this, Rossner Confectionery Building at 2 through 4 South Potomac Street. By completing this project in accordance with adopted guidelines for use of modern materials in rehabilitation projects, the building received new weather-resistant and durable replacement windows that, at the same time, were of such design to be consistent with the historic nature of the building, demonstrating that the use of modern materials to protect the historic design are compatible goals in revitalization projects. Thank you so much for your work.
The next one we have is the South Prospect Street Duplex. This is a property that the city purchased a number of years ago. It was a single-family home that had been divided into, I believe, four apartments. The city purchased it and renovated it into a semi-detached dwelling. It means each half of the building is a side-by-side dwelling unit with a party wall. And there was a subdivision created that put a property line down through the middle that was a major improvement for this part of the South Prospect Street scape and also was a stabilizing factor in that they were sold off for homeownership. So we have homeowners in both sides of this duplex now, whereas before it was a four-unit apartment building with very tiny, very small apartments. And this was done by the city's Department of Economic and Community Development. And we have staff members here from that department to accept the award. We have Margie Jo and Jill Thompson.
The Hagerstown 2024 Outstanding Rehabilitation Project for the Historic District Commission hereby recognizes the City of Hagerstown Department of Economic and Community Development for your rehabilitation of the multifamily dwelling for two semi-detached dwellings available for homeownership in the Prospect Street Historic District. By converting this former home, which had previously been divided into four apartments, into semi-detached dwelling structure with each home on its own lot, they introduced another stabilizing influence to that historic community in a way that preserved the historic architectural character of the building as a former single-family dwelling. So thank you guys for your work.
We're getting close, folks. Okay, the next one is a little outside of the box, but there's a very good reason for it. The next awardee is Meredith's Park. Or the project is Meredith's Park. The awardees are the Maryland Stadium Authority and the Hagerstown Multi-Use Sports and Events Facility Incorporated. Folks ask, why would a new stadium be a historic preservation project? And that's very simple, the influence that it'll have on the surrounding areas. The Meredith's Park is located in a horseshoe of city historic districts. You have South Prospect Street here, and then you have the Downtown Historic District here. And it's such a catalyzing development that it's clearly going to have ripple effects on the potential for the revitalization and redevelopment of properties in the surrounding area, which will benefit the marketability and viability of certain historic preservation projects in the immediate vicinity. Also, as far as the design goes, it fits in quite well with the downtown environment as well. So it was actually very well designed on top of the fact that it's also going to be an economic driver that will have spin-off benefits to historic preservation. So with that, we'd like to invite, we've got Mr. Snook back there and anybody else who may be here. We also have folks from the Flying Box Cars here as well.
Wow, thank you for the amazing stadium that me and my family love so much. The Hagerstown Historic District Commission hereby recognizes the Maryland Stadium Authority and the Hagerstown Multi-Use Sports and Events Facility, Inc. for the development and construction of the multi-use sports and events complex, now known as Meredith's Park. Although not a preservation project per se, its construction will have massive catalytic impact on the revitalization of the historic downtown and adjacent historic residential areas. This will spur interest in historic rehabilitation projects in the downtown historical district, the South Prospect Street Historic District and surrounding areas. This new facility was designed in a way that is architecturally complementary to the downtown area. So thank you again.
And now we move on to our last presentation, which actually consists of two awards, and there's a very good reason for this. Hotel Alexander, as everybody knows, has gone through a major renovation project over the last few years. Recently is wrapped up. And there's a number of things that were done to the building that were actually very consistent with the historic nature of the building. There've been many changes made to it over the years. And as part of their renovation project, they did a number of things that helped bring the building back closer to its original historical appearance. One of the things that is included in that is, as we've mentioned earlier, the use of modern materials in certain parts of renovation projects, such as windows. And in this particular case, the applicant, they proposed to use the design guidelines recommendation for replicating historic window patterns in the first three floors. Basically, what is typically within eyesight as you're walking through town on the windows. If you notice, historically, the windows here, they were three over six patterns. And they went all the way up to the top floor of the building. all the way up to the top floor of the building. But in this particular case, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to do it for the entire building. So they did it just for the first three floors. And it turned out quite well. As a matter of fact, this is what we have here now, is the new storefronts and all, the removal of the awnings. And you'll see the first couple of floors here, first this floor, this floor, and this floor, they have the grill patterns in the windows. But once you get above this cornice here, it goes back to the, to the single-pane type. After this project was underway, we were approached by the applicant, NHP Foundation, about some additional work that they wanted to do. And that is on the one-story section of the building located between it and the Rezners Confectionery. That's this area right in here. This area, I did some research, and this place had been remodeled over and over and over again over the last hundred years, and to the point where the most recent version was circa nineteen seventy or so, very uninviting. But they decided they wanted to pull off that fake or false brick front off of it, and they found underneath a lot of the original material was salvageable. So they reexposed it, put new storefront windows in it, and now it's, it's not a duplicate of what was there originally, but it's very close. And with that, that was kind of a second-stage project. And we thought that the influences of that on the Public Square area made that corner of Public Square much more inviting than it previously had been. And as a result, both projects individually deserve to be recognized. So with that, we'd like to have folks from NHP Foundation. Please.
Good to see you again. How you doing? The Hagerstown Historic District Commission hereby recognizes the NHP Foundation and Quinn Evans Architects for the unmasking and renovation of the one-story storefront and access wing of the historic Hotel Alexander on Public Square. By removing the Serica nineteen-sixties brick facade, exposing the historic nineteen twenties facade underneath, and restoring that facade to close to its original appearance, it removed an intrusive, uncharacteristic, and highly visible later modification of the building, improving the street scape and the iconic location in the city's street scape. I am tongue-tied. I'm so sorry. But thank you so much. To the same group. All right. So the Hagerstown Historic District Commission hereby recognizes the NHP Foundation and Quinn Evans Architects for the renovation of the historic Hotel Alexander on Public Square by renovating the entirety of this eleven-story building and including exterior rehabilitation of the storefronts and installation of historically characteristic replacement windows on the first three floors in its plan. The building has been secured for many years of ongoing use to the community while at the same time restoring certain architectural elements to this historic building. Thank you again for your investment.
Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
I have a motion for appointments for Board of Traffic and Parking for Ms. Tamara Pitts. Term expires July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, and Historic Commission Mike Heiser. Term expires July twenty-third, twenty twenty-seven. Discussion. Does in favor. Oppose. Motion carries. All right. Ms. Tamara, you ready to sworn in? How many times have you done this? Your second time. Well, thank you for your service. Have you raise your right hand? Is it camera? Camera.
My camera.
My camera. I, Tamara Pitts. Do you swear? That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
Faithful and bear true allegiance.
For the state of Maryland. And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
Support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Hagerstown. And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Board of Traffic and Parking, according to the Constitution and laws of the state. Congratulations. Sign the book. You're gonna sign the book right here. I'm gonna get you a pen. And this is your account. And we're gonna take a picture. We have citizen comments. Can I state your name? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes, and the time will be on the screen. And first, we have Mr. Michael Stuck.
Michael Stuck, eighteen South Mulberry Street. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Bender back there. I didn't know him, but I'm the one that called him about the garbage can on the street that has sat there four weeks. Thank you for getting that. It had maggots. That's one issue that I'm here about, the neighbors. Hundred-degree heat, we still have buildings throwing garbage bags all over the street. The garbage men are picking up your cans and letting the bags. So what do you think it looks like and smells like in hundred-degree heat, sitting on the street? We don't know how to handle it. So I called Mr. Bender, and he took care of it. And I thank him for that. The neighbors thank him because we have children. And what happens when, these are those brown cans, black cans you get in Wal-Mart. What happens when someone, druggies, knock it over or drunks? Who's gonna pick it up? Me and my neighbor have been picking up. Right now, the East End neighborhood by Church of the Brethren, and from East Franklin to the corner pub is under siege. And you people need to open eyes and realize, we have this going on in the alley. You have all these people remodeling buildings with no building permits. This is put in the alley today, the alley behind the parking, old hospital parking lot. This is there now. If a fire truck or ambulance had to get through there, they're not going through. This is a young gentleman sitting at the Church of Brethren tonight before I came shooting up in his feet. This is thirty-four needles in two locations in fifteen minutes. It's a mess. If you walk out of the library and down that alley, this is behind the building. I picked up in one yard and the extension next to it. So I don't want, I don't, I don't care about these experts telling me drug rehab's working because we're seeing people in drug rehab coming out clean, healthy, and two weeks later, we're seeing them laying up on the street by the cemetery. We've had three major incidents. You are all aware of what happened on East Washington Street. And I can tell you personally that I could have been shot if had I not, I had been through there before there, coming from Dollar General on the side of the school. And I have the pictures to prove the bullet holes in the school and the lady's house. If that had been around the corner, there'd been nine or ten dead. Somebody needs to take a look at East Franklin Street to East Washington Street, that block. It is one mess. It is all-night prostitutes, druggies. It is trash. It is a disgrace to this city. Church of the Brethren, they're smoking crack on a church step. They're over behind that alley, the lady that passed away, her garage, is a mess. Condoms. Druggies, all night, cars pulling in the alley. You really need to see what's going on there. So I'm here again going, but now we have a new store opening. We're all glad of that. But is it gonna happen up there what happened with Sheetz? And we hope not, because we're not gonna put up with it. And I'm here representing everybody. So we hope you're all up for election.
Thank you, Mr. Stuck. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. Mr. Robert Comer. Did I say that correctly? Comer? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, Mr. Comer.
Robert F. Comer, one fifty East Urban Avenue. I'll just read this to save time. I want to thank Paul Falk of Neighborhood Services, Captain Langson of the Police Department, and Sergeant Lewis, because right now, this neighbor who's next door to me, I think he's in compliance, but he falls in and out of compliance. It's a rental property, an investment property. I understand this man owns several in our neighborhood. Anyway, I confronted them probably in late March about the noise, and he goes, well, I own this house, and I work on race cars. Now, one of my neighbors who had complained got some information from someone in zoning and said, there is no evidence of a repair shop. Well, I beg to differ. It might not be a repair shop, but there are multiple cars going in there, multiple tags, and they, they pull the fenders off, they change the tires, they have truckloads of tires going in there. They wear blue nitro gloves, they blow over my property, auto wrapping parts all over my property. And then the sound ordinance, I understand, is sixty-five decibels in the daytime. They use impact wrenches, air hammers in this garage. Now, this is a residential Armad district. All those houses have houses, sixty feet, a garage, an alley, then another garage, sixty feet to the next house. My house is different. It sits right there. There is an alley that divides these two houses. This garage is twenty feet from my bedroom. And this guy goes in there, and he works on these cars whenever he feels like it. I gotta listen to that. And then on top of that, he plays club music, blares it all over the neighborhood with subwoofer bass. It is so jarring, it makes the sashes and the stormant is of my house literally shake. I mean, you can't get any sleep. I've been awakened at night, early in the morning. I've actually heard neighbors from a block away come down and tell him to turn the music down. And I'm twenty feet away from this joker. But the police come, I've called, I've lived in Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Westminster, forty-two years of homeownership. I've never called the police on a neighbor. I've called the police more times in four months than I have my entire life. It's ridiculous. And half the time, I called up because what this gentleman just talked about, with all the shootings going on, I feel guilty calling the police for sound, for sound and disturbances. But I mean, and not only is it the sound, there's like fumes, he welds, he sodders, he uses solvents, and then all the stuff out of this car, he drains all this crap out into the alley. And people walk their pets and their children down the alley. So I would appreciate it if you would look further into it.
Thank you, Mr. Comer.
You can't expect the police to do everything. What they should do is modify the ordinance because twenty feet away from a house.
Thank you, Mr. Comer.
Yes.
Next, we have Renee Bergen. And please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Renee Bergen, nineteen Mulberry Avenue. I'll address the objects that I have here first. So I'm here tonight to propose a ban on fishing at Pangborn Park. This is everything that I've found there so far this year in twenty twenty-four. And here is a box full of fishing lines, bobbers, bait, trash related to fishing. I found a knife. I found a knife last year also. Here's here two bags I found on both Saturday and Sunday of just this weekend. Additionally, tackle box this season so far. And I have found numerous improperly discarded, as you can see, there's fishing line attached to pieces of, pieces of branches. The reason why I'm proposing this is, I think most of you know, through my emails and social media from last year, Dave the Goose. More than, more than one million birds die each year from discarded fishing debris. That's across the board. That's, that's the numbers we know about. That is from the Audubon Society of Western PA. Fishing hooks can blind animals. If swallowed, they lacerate beaks and throats. And that is from savecostalwildlife.org. Fishing line also leaves animals vulnerable to predators, starvation, and drowning, also from the same website, savecostalwildlife.org. Monofilament, the fishing line, monofilament fishing line takes six hundred years to break down. That is from Leave No Trace. Let me see. So, and I've also, every time I see a fishing line, bobber, anything hanging from the tree branches at Pangborn Park, I notify Mark Haddock. Currently, I think I texted him, yes, I texted him yesterday, sent him images. There's currently fishing line bobbers and such in a couple of trees at Pangborn. And, you know, obviously, that's a safety hazard for other wildlife, birds, robins, whatever other herons. We have beautiful, we have a beautiful heron that hangs out at Pangborn. And so, you know, those fishing lines and such in the trees create a hazard to them as well. Let's see. Oh, and also this year, I, so I went to, you know, I always pick up trash and debris and everything in the, in the lake. Your staff can, you know, Mike can vouch for me. Many of the workers there, they can, anyhow. I went to grab it, and it swam off. So there was a bobber, I haven't seen it since, but there was a bobber attached to either a turtle, a fish, or something in Pangborn Park. I appreciate the, I appreciate the city's response last year and having the monofilament recycling stations there, but they're not working. Obviously, they're not working. I keep finding up, I keep finding, you know, trash and fishing line and such. So I would like to, again, propose a ban on, a ban on total, a total ban on fishing at Pangborn Park. Enforcement is another issue. There's a lack of enforcement. There's, there's signs posted there. Kids thirteen and under, adults over sixty-five are supposed to be allowed to fish there, but staff are not enforcing that. I told a staff last week, I said, that guy's not supposed to be fishing here. And he said, he said, well, he's got a license. I said, but that doesn't matter. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Renee. Next, we have Laura Berry. Please state your address and name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Laura Berry. I live at three forty-three North Mulberry Street. Okay, so we have had a lot going on in my neighborhood. There is a vacant house next to mine. I spoke with the owner. He is not a very nice gentleman from New York, who's allegedly a part of the revitalization of Hagerstown, but doesn't care that his home keeps being broken into because it's vacant. I have called the police multiple times. I understand they're super busy. They come when they feel like it. I call when they're there. They're squatters. I'm terrified that in between the houses, my house and the vacant house, that they're gonna push my air conditioner in and break in my house. So I've tried to speak with the owner about it. He doesn't care. The police don't see them because obviously, that's not a priority when we have shootings and all of that stuff going on. I get it. Because I have called, my car was vandalized in broad daylight by one of these teenagers, banged my windshield in with six thousand dollars worth of damage, and stood on my hood and my roof. So that happened back on June eleventh. On the thirteenth, the same child had her arm cut up by somebody in the community because she probably popped off and ran her mouth just like she did to us when we came out and said, what are you doing? Why are you touching this car? And it's a sad situation. Same police also. Same police officer that I did end up speaking with was there trying to put a makeshift tourniquet on her, and nothing is being done. The day that my car was vandalized, I called the police. The police never came. I got a call from somebody who identified themselves as an officer, gave me a report number. And the next day, when I had to call on a different matter, the two officers that came said that that person, in fact, was not a police officer and that she shouldn't have identified herself as such. I felt some sort of way. I felt like nobody was taking it serious. And come to find out, wasn't an officer at all that gave me the report number. I get the need to delegate. I get that. However, this is still continuing on. There is a lack of police presence. As the other gentleman said, the police can't do everything. I get that. But we can't be expected to do everything as the citizens because when these kids start and they do stuff, then my vehicle that I get to work with is being vandalized and I have to come out of pocket for stuff. Like, I want to refer back to what Madam Mayor said at the last regular meeting last month, when you said that you challenged the parents to know where their kids are. These people don't know where their kids are. None of these kids are being held accountable. No police officer spoke to this child about vandalizing my car. I did find out her mother is on drugs. So there's no point of me trying to go that route. But if, as far as that goes, something has to be done, whether these kids are held accountable or the parents. Somebody needs to be held accountable. Because not saying anything to anybody is just letting them know that they can continue on.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Berry. Next, we have Aaron Pentonence. You have three minutes. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Aaron Petterunets, 227 North Prospect Street. I'm here tonight because there was a murder on my sidewalk in broad daylight. I'd also like to preface that these are my words and my words alone. I have two concerns with my allotted time. This city's budget priorities and this city exacerbating the housing crisis. And I have one call to action. By your own admission, just last week, this council can only do two things. Pass the city administrator's budget and pass ordinances written by staff. If we're to believe what we heard, that only leaves one person at the table that has the authority and responsibility to direct this city. The buck stops with the administrator. I would have assumed those elected would hold the reins, but that duty has clearly been abdicated long ago. First, I'll start with the budget and its priorities. Just here in City Hall, $600,000 on elevator renovations, $5,000 on renovating the administrator's office. But the big numbers come with the allotted $25 million to the indoor sports facility. Of that 25 million, one and a half million dollars was robbed from 911 services and $16 million is going on a credit card. But most striking is the $5 million in cash being spent on this project instead of, say, granting the construction of round-the-clock shelters or funding anti-violence programs or showing any leadership whatsoever to the multitude of charities vying to help. Me, personally, am stuck here trying to convince people to live and work in this city while simultaneously patching bullet holes in my buildings and apologizing to my tenants for the daily vandalism, drug dealing, and prostitution that occurs everywhere I go. Secondly, the dramatic rise in rents and housing costs in the city are not simply inflation, but a direct result of initiatives and ordinances championed and passed at the table and administered in this building. It is routinely stated that the cost burden of proposed ordinances are never taken into consideration. The citizens of this city need to know that when their rent goes up or their mortgage escrow increases, it is because this administration's ignorance to the cost burdens of their legislation. Plain and simple. This body must call for a complete review of every ordinance and regulation they've passed with the goal of gathering real data on the costs you've imposed upon the public. Due to your ordinances and how they are being enforced, people are routinely removed from their homes with some never being able to afford to go back. I call on not just the people here, but to everyone running. The council needs to act bravely and boldly. It must seize back the reins and start demanding answers for the abject failure of this city's administration. I call on you to do this because of what we face. Murders, shootings, gang violence, homelessness, drug use, human trafficking. I know what she's doing, but what's he doing? It's your name on the ballot, like it's been said tonight. These multiplying and compounding failures are quickly burning away the benefits of the precious few victories that we get. Every single person listening needs to realize just how perilously close we have come to being a tragic national headline.
Thank you.
Spending $25 million on a sports facility is a waste if it's too dangerous to bring your family to our city.
Thank you, Aaron. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Like...
There were two others.
Oh, after, okay, I'm sorry. All right. Okay, all right. Okay, Sterling Sanders, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Sterling Sanders, 237 South Mulberry Street. So I'm here today, last Monday, all of you received an email from me. There was a couple in the alley behind my apartment shooting heroin into their knees, their thighs, and their toes in broad daylight at 3 o'clock PM, okay? I called 911 and the dispatcher told me to contact non-emergency services if police did not show up. I waited in my car for 45 minutes watching this couple shoot heroin into their body and not care about the kids on the bicycles riding by, not care that the neighbors were out here watching them. They're just shooting up in the alley. It took 45 minutes until they left. No officer showed up. They left and I called non-emergency dispatch and they thanked me for letting them know that they left. An hour later, I received a direct phone call from an officer who talked to me a little bit. And since then, yesterday, I had the same exact incident happen in the same exact spot with two different people. Luckily, I contacted the officer that talked to me directly instead of calling 911, or there would have been two more people shooting up with 45-minute delay in response. Instead, there was a five-minute delay. The reason I'm mad about that is because I shouldn't have to reach out directly to a police officer to get a response. If I call 911, somebody needs to be there within 45 minutes. And if it can't be HPD, then let's work something out with the county to get the sheriff's office involved and get MSP involved. Because we can't do this alone in Hagerstown City. We have to work together. And we are in Washington County and the state of Maryland. If there can't be some type of collaborative effort to get the drugs off the street, it's just going to keep happening and everybody's going to keep dying. And that's the truth. And I know you guys would be a little bit more upset if it was one of your kids or grandkids out there riding bicycles and they got stuck. And that's unacceptable in this city. We can do better. We need to do better. And I'm just, I'm very upset. And I know the general public's going to ask, you know, what am I doing? So I want to let you guys know that Friday, I will be going to Hagerstown Police Department for a panel interview and to do my written exam to become a police officer in the city of Hagerstown because I'm tired of complaining and not getting answers. So I'm putting my boots on the ground so I can make sure that this is a safe community. I thank you for your leadership, but it could be better.
Thank you, Sterling. Next, Mr. Tim. Do you want to finish clapping? And Tim Fisher, please state your name and address for the record.
I think I want to finish clapping.
Tim Fisher, representing 117 Summit Avenue. I'm just here tonight to, I think, reintroduce myself. I am the CEO of the Community Action Council. The Community Action Council is the federally mandated, state-designated anti-poverty agency for Washington County. I watched the meeting last week and I saw some and heard some comments, some impassioned comments. Madam Mayor reached out to you. I think you have a couple more emails in your box from me. I like to think you didn't ghost me, but okay. I just want you guys to know that if there's a question about what's happening, we are also the state-appointed agency as the lead agency for homeless solutions in Washington County. We received from the state about $275,000 to do that, to solve homelessness in the entirety of Washington County, not just the city. Where the city is concerned, we as an agency recer, receive, excuse me, annually $4,800. $4,800 annually for the, for Carlisle Bloom, which is to help with energy assistance for those who have lived in the city for more than a year. That's what we receive. I think we are among only one or two community action agencies. And just so you know, just in case you don't, there are over 1,000 community action agencies across the United States. We serve 99% of all the counties in the United States. There are only two organizations in the United States that receive a dedicated federal block grant for their existence, community action, and the Department of Social Services. That is not to say that we are better than anyone because we are not. As we've heard here this evening, these are complex issues that will take partnerships, layered partnerships, to make even a dent in. But I want this council and this stat and this body to know that if there is ever a question about what we're doing as an organization or what we are helping other organizations do as a pass-through for some of those HSP funds, my phone works 24/7. My email works 24/7. I am always available to come down and speak to this body. And I hope, I would hope, as the anti-poverty agency for Washington County, as the lead agency appointed as the state of Maryland, that we can soon bring some folks together. It wasn't long ago I was here with the chief of police and we talked about a tiny home village. That seemed like that was nixed pretty quickly, not sure why. But here's the thing, we're going to have to do something. None of these issues are going to get better by osmosis. There's some ancient wisdom that says, where your treasure is, that's where your heart is also.
Right, amen. Thank you.
And so I would say, let's examine where our treasure is.
Thank you.
And I would close with saying, there are times that anger feels like conviction. Anger is not conviction. And the way that you measure and juxtapose the two is by your action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Good job. And I didn't ghost you. I had it, there was a family emergency. Just to answer you on the record, since you asked me on the record. That's all that's, that's all that signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Jason Physioc. I'm Hagerstounian, north, south, east, and west. I have no fixed address. I thought it was five minutes, but I'll try to squeeze as much as I can in here.
Three.
There's, yeah. There's two things that I really wanted to talk about. But first, I'd just like to make the statement, you know, like, sometimes it's the complainers that need to shut up, take a seat, and step in somebody else's shoes before they get back up again. Sometimes that's where the solution starts. But, okay, number one, and forgive me if I slip my language. You know, I try to say yuck instead of fuck. Or yuck or shit. I don't know what's offensive, you know, sensitive ears start fights. But my first issue is, I don't care what the reason was for removing the benches on the square. It's not valid. It's very disrespectful to Hagerstounians. My children live here. You know, like, why were the benches gone? I don't even care the reason. They need to return. And more of them, you know, are happy and delightful and pleasant Hagerstounians to talk to. They sit on benches, you know? But anyway, so there's my first what do I call it? Movement, all right? My second movement, anybody could help me in this. I need campaign funding. Yeah, I do. I'm running for president, but I'm not running for president. It's a joke, but it's not a joke. Okay? My name is Jason Physioc. That's P-H-Y-S-I-O-C. JasonPhysioc@gmail.com. Always got to put that in there. But I'm running for president and I'm not running for president. Number one agenda in my kingdom, yuck that two-party system. That's dead. Number one agenda in my kingdom is anything that's disproven, that theory gets put in a history book to collect dust on the shelf. Number one, okay? Number two, every single, every single drug law, gone. Delete. Gone, erased. Now, the funding that went to the fucking, the yuck, the yuck, yuck prisons and the courts and everything, that goes back to the people. Every law, unless something becomes an issue, we don't make yuck, yuck the law. Okay? And number three, community kitchens. And now, these are just the first three, okay? Community kitchens, because a lot of that money can get back to the community. Everybody can be fed. I want buffets. I like to be a vegetarian, but, you know, food spoils wherever I stay. I stay in the, I stay on the bridge, I stay in, wherever I stay.
Thank you.
And some people can't cook. You know, that'll solve that problem, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Ethan Lowen, Wilson Boulevard. After a particularly violent murder occurred last week, one of the city council members asked for ideas to deal with our city's crime. Because when you compare us to other cities in America, you see how violent we have become. When it comes to victims of rape, for example, we are in the top 15% of cities with the highest risk of a person being raped. We are also in the top 15% of cities where a person's risk of being murdered. For aggravated assault, which is oftentimes an indicator of whether murders and rapes will continue increasing or possibly decrease, we rank in the top 5% of all cities to be attacked and injured in. For this type of crime, aggravated assault, Baltimore is safer than we are, which means that the third-most violent city in America is possibly trending to become a safer city for its residents than us. And underlying the violence is an unrestrained drug trade that is indescribably evil in the number of lives it destroys. I know two people who collect drug needles off the ground because of their fear that children will get infected. One of them has collected over 3,000 needles in 18 months. As we were talking, he asked me to walk down the street. I walked 30 feet and saw seven needles. In the face of our community having become one of the most violent in America, the call goes out for solutions. I want to thank that council member. I am a volunteer for an organization that works the violent offenders to help them never again cause the harm they once did. And while I'm passionate about helping people leave fear and pain behind and amazed at how people can change, the truth is that there is no program that can reduce violence even 20% as effectively as a police department that is empowered to prevent the crime and drug trade that are constantly pulling young people into a lifestyle of violence to begin with. The good news is the solutions to these problems are well-established. There are, there is no issue we are dealing with that isn't dealt with by them, by most communities across America. The major difference between us and the communities that have less crime is that we have stopped treating drugs and violence as being the causes of suffering and tragedy that they are and began discussing them as if they are impossibly complex, almost philosophical issues. My hometown of New York City made a similar mistake in the 1980s when they became one of the cities that allowed the crack epidemic to rage on their streets. The results were the same for them as for us. The human suffering was incalculable. Then in 1993, the city council chose to act. They rebuilt the police department and told them to once again start proactive policing. The result is that by 1997, four years later, murders dropped 55%, and the benefits kept growing. Every category of crime dropped. The prison population shrank simply because when there is less crime in a community, less children in those communities grow up to ever commit a crime to begin with themselves. But most importantly during that time, the drug trade was dealt with. Many drug dealers actually left New York City to find other communities whose police departments still operated like the New York City Police Department of the 1980s. And that's where they stayed and began selling drugs once again. We are not the first community to make this mistake and we cannot undo the suffering that's been done. However, we can stop this suffering from being passed on to the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Is there any emails?
Not that anybody, the people that sent emails are here.
Council, I know we had discussed previously about addressing in between or before moving on. Would you guys like to do that, to address any of the citizen comments? Next up, we have a public hearing for 2024 package of land management code, LMC amendments.
You start, Steve. Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Stephen Bachmiller, Hagerstown City Zoning Administrator, one East Franklin Street, Hagerstown. Evening, everyone. We're here for our once annual, usually once annual visit regarding the land management code. For those who are in the gallery or watching on television, just to give them a really brief overview of what we're dealing with here, land management code is chapter one forty of the city code. It's a consolidation of four previous standalone ordinances that included the zoning subdivision, land development, floodplain management, and forest conservation ordinances. It's now one single unified code known as the land management code. Typically, land management code amendments are reviewed and processed, proposed on an annual basis. This is because it takes a lot of staff time and expense to amend the code, so we reserve it to once a year rather than every time there's a proposal, process another one. We gather them all together over the course of a year and then present them as a package. For this package, there are sixteen proposals which will be enumerated individually later in this presentation. I will enter into the record by reference the certificate of advertising for tonight's hearing and the actual package of proposals in memo format. The Planning Commission held a public review meeting on May twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four. They discussed the proposals and the results of the public review meeting and voted to forward the recommended, recommended proposed amendments at their June twelfth, twenty-twenty-four meeting. So that is what you have had forwarded to you and is under consideration this evening. And I'm going to briefly walk us through those. Gives more than one option to consider and states that the preferred route is the roundabout, but it does not eliminate or negate the use of stop signs. The second item is to require cul-de-sacs with islands in the center to meet minimum turning radius requirements to account for curbside parking in order to accommodate emergency vehicles and snowplows. We have a couple of cul-de-sacs with interior islands and then that have been developed over the last twenty years, and we find that once somebody decides to park around the outside edge of it like the van is in this photograph, emergency equipment, fire trucks, the snowplows have a hard time navigating around that. Rather than eliminate the requirement, or eliminate the ability of possibly having an island, it just simply says it has to meet radius requirements. So if you want an island that bad, you're gonna have to make a bigger cul-de-sac. Proposal number three, require parking lot striping to be maintained as needed. To clarify, this provision clarifies that parking lot striping is to be maintained in accordance with the approved site plan. This is not a new requirement. Developers are required to maintain their property in accordance with their approved site plan, so if there's an existing site plan, one file, it's already assumed that they, they have to maintain the site in accordance with that plan. What is new is it creates a process for determining how parking lots that were created before site plans were required should be striped and requires implementation of a striping plan when zoning or building approvals are requested. They are usually small congested sites. We're talking about sites that had six to twenty parking spaces, so we're not talking a lot of striping here. Proposal number four is to make minor adjustments to the definition of child daycare. This is needed to clarify between an in-home daycare operation and a commercial or institutional operation. It clarifies distinction between small uses permitted as accessory to a dwelling versus more commercial or institutional facilities not operated from someone's home, which are addressed separately in the ordinance. Proposal number five is to provide for a special exception for a freestanding sign in the CCMU zoning district larger than the current requirements of the ordinance. This allows for the few freestanding buildings with surrounding land area in the downtown to have freestanding signs more consistent with the amount of road frontage they have, which is more extensive than most properties. Currently, we do have provisions for freestanding signs in the downtown district, but they're limited to ten feet in height and some other conventional requirements as well. This would allow a special exception to go larger than that. Number six, it creates an option for large projecting signs in the downtown historic district and landmark properties in the CCMU zoning district. This has been driven by observation that the downtown area's historic nature is more late nineteenth and early twentieth century, and the city's current regulations for projecting signs are more based on a colonial, for lack of words, a colonial Williamsburg model, which is not the character of the CCMU zoning district. This allows for large projecting signs subject to certain zoning and design regulations in keeping with historic signage patterns downtown. If you look at photographs of downtown area from the nineteen thirties, forties, there's a large number of these types of signs, as you see in this example. This photograph is, by the way, is not from this jurisdiction. But you'll see signs historically in our downtown consistent with this type of signage, but our ordinance has currently done allow, allow for it. So this would be a new provision for new types of signage in the downtown. Proposal number seven, widen the exception for marquee signs in the CCMU zoning district to account for new performing arts venues and existing non-theater and new buildings. Found that basically we only really have one existing new marquee, and that's what was proposed for the Maryland Theater. But as things like Hub City Live and other venues may come online, there may be some want or need for a, a marquee for a performance venue that might not be in a traditional performance venue setting, like in a repurposed building. Proposal number eight is a proposal for regulations for storage recreational vehicles in residential areas. Currently, very little is within our regulations that govern this issue. Given the small size of most lots in the city, such use can cause significant impact on the use enjoyment of resale of the neighbor's property. What this proposal does, it creates a basic standard that is flexible for larger properties, provide guidance for property owners permitting their placement in front yards when, where sufficient area is available. And there are some, just show you a few examples of which you have when you have nothing on your books that regulates this in any way, shape, or form. Gives you an idea of some of the issues that are, that are out there. Number nine is to clarify screening and landscaping requirements for new car repair, car sales, and motor vehicle storage facilities. Creates consistency so that towing facilities and commercial recreational vehicle storage are covered by the same regulations as car sales and rental facilities. It adds new automobile repair facilities to the types of uses covered by the screening and landscaping requirements. And it's designed also to be flexible in order for existing vacant facilities to at least provide some landscaping and screening. Waivers are subject to waiver requests and approval to the planning, and approval by the Planning Commission, which historically has been a very, been accommodating, especially to very small sites. Proposal number ten, require on-site parking for outdoor seating at restaurants and taverns over incidental accessory use and explains how parking requirements are administered. This is a two-part provision. One, it's not new. It's a, it explains what has been the policy of the city in administering parking requirements for probably four decades. I've been with the city for twenty-two years now, and I know these, I just picked up the interpretation or the administration from my predecessor who, and that policy was there for years. And basically, we administer what's on the site plan, but we don't, if the property was developed before a site plan. And all that provision does is it clarifies what we've been doing and seems to be working very well for the last four decades. However, there is a new provision in here, and that is, if you have a facility that has, decides it's gonna have a large outdoor seating area that outstrips what its interior seating capacity is, and parking is, has historically been based on interior seating capacity, that onsite parking has to be provided. This came up because there's a facility here in the city that opened up recently, well, expanded recently, to have a large amount of outdoor seating but provided no additional parking, and it was overflowing into the neighborhoods and onto adjacent business property parking areas. Denying the people who were paying the taxes on the particular property for maintaining parking for their customers, not being afforded the benefit of using their own parking because it's taken up by a neighboring business owner. Proposal number eleven, permit existing non-residential buildings in the CG district to be converted to mixed use, including, to include residential and commercial uses subject to certain performance standards. This addresses the current housing shortage. We are now receiving inquiries regarding mixed-use buildings. I'll talk about that more in a moment. New mixed-use buildings are already permitted on lots over a minimum size. This will allow existing buildings to be converted to mixed use. This will remove minimum lot area requirements for new buildings and existing buildings, and design and layout is and will continue to be subject to certain design requirements. Historically, residential uses have never been permitted in the CG zoning district. And what this does, we actually, a couple of years ago, this body adopted amendments that allowed for mixed, new mixed-use buildings on a property of a certain minimum size to, to have upper-level apartments. And we are finding now that we are getting a lot of interest in that. We actually have one concept planned for a fairly large development currently under review. And other properties have been, we've been approached about other properties, about similar type developments. And so what this does is, it's going to allow more opportunities for multifamily dwellings in the CG zoning district and should help toward alleviating the housing supply problem here in the city. Issues twenty, twenty-two, four, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are adding and eliminating certain uses from certain districts. It eliminates quadruplexes and triplexes from the Art Med District in order to make that district more compatible with the county's nearest zoning to simplify annexation issues. It adds four new uses permitted by right and one by special exception in the CR zoning district to make that district available for warehouse flex uses similar to the same performance standards in place. Currently, for the POM district, it'll make CR district more comparable to the county's similar highway zoning district. Also, it removes the term substance abuse from the description of hospitals, since other previous amendments made this redundant and could create confusion. Number fifteen, amended provision for alternate living units, small group homes, and small halfway houses to limit the number of them in any given building. But we're finding that a small group home could be in any place that a dwelling is permitted, but never had the, the thought of, of as many people as nine people living in an individual apartment in every unit in an apartment building. So this is, creates a bit of control in that situation and would limit those uses to one per building. And then, proposal sixteen is to make amendments to cannabis facilities and similar businesses to be compliant with recently adopted state law. Recently adopted state code places new limits on local jurisdictions in regulating this use. It has to be regulated similar to alcohol and tobacco. It also adds certain institutions to a five-hundred-foot separation requirement as included in the state code. This is due to need to have consistence with, in zoning standards between tobacco, alcohol, and cannabis sales as dictated by the state law. Proposes adding hemp sales to this land use category, also removes cannabis growers/processors from the CCMU and POM districts due to external odors generated. The facilities that have been developed in the city, there's definitely an external odor, which is one of the factors in determining whether something's light, medium, or heavy industrial. And so the idea is to take this out of the CCMU, which is our downtown zoning, and our POM, which is off of Park City. And then seventeen, make the conversion district overlay consistent with the local conversion overlay. Couple of years ago, or last year, within the last year or two, we did an amendment that eliminated a requirement that additions to local conversion, buildings with local conversion overlays be in the least visible location on the property possible. This was driven by a request by Dr. Eklund wanting to put a small addition on the front of his building. That amendment was approved and went into effect, but we're also finding as we reviewed the ordinance, that the same language was in the conversion overlay. And if it's good enough to pull out of the local conversion, why not the conversion as well? Makes the development, or redevelopment and adaptive reuse of property subject to conversion overlays more amenable and flexible. We're having the public hearing, that's what we're having right now. August thirteenth, we are tentatively scheduled to meet with you all to hear your discussion, receive direction from you all on how you want to proceed on these proposals. You can approve them all, you can approve select ones of them, you can reject any of them if you choose to. If there's some that you think are close and you need to tweak them some, some minor adjustments could be adapted as well prior to adoption. But it's not a take it or leave it packet by any, by any means. And if everything goes well on August thirteenth, then we would introduce an ordinance to adopt the revisions. They would be voted on by you at the end of September and take effect the end of October. And if folks have any questions, they can contact me at extension one thirty-nine and, or my email, spachmiller@hagerstownmd.org.
Thank you. Is anyone's on the? The record will say open contenders? Counsel, do those have any questions concerned?
Do we need to be sworn in at this point, since we're still in the public hearing, to make comments, or no? I'm happy to go down there and do it.
I think we do.
Oh, my God.
If you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And then please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Councilman Peter Perini, one East Franklin Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. I just have a general comment. And there's a whole packet of items, seventeen items, and, you know, we have, we have zoning codes, we have planning codes, we have building codes. All of these things are important, so we don't have chaos. But also, I think sometimes we have to be careful not to overreach and extend to develop land management codes because somebody doesn't like something. That, I don't think personally, is in the purview of this body. So as we're going through these items, these seventeen recommended changes to the land management code, I would encourage that we look into the details of which each, which each item says. Thank you.
Anybody else might be sworn in, comments?
Sure. Probably sworn in.
You want me to go down there and kind of sit here?
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Sure, yep.
And state your name and address.
Twelve seventeen, Virginia Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland. Maybe three comments. The first is, as I have said previously, as it is associated with the mayor council's ability to pass regulations associated with the production and sale of cannabis products, I believe that that violates our oath of office to uphold the U.S. Constitution, as that particular item continues to be identified by the federal government as a CD one category drug. The second comment I have this evening, given the studious remarks during the public comment period, if there is any interest among any member of the elected body to return these proposed changes to the appropriate boards, commissions, and city staff to review their fiscal impact on costs associated with housing. And the last comment that I have is specifically in relation to item number... The storage of recreational vehicles.
Eight.
Yeah. I would recommend consideration of language in that particular item that would provide a very small grammatical change to item twenty D, under Article Four, Section K, that would begin that sentence with, "All vehicles greater than six feet in height shall comply with the same setback requirements as is required," et cetera, et cetera. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is it now appropriate to say the record will stay open? The record will stay open for ten days. Thank you. Um, may I have approval of the minutes?
Madam Mayor, hereby move the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on June fourth, two thousand twenty-four, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, and June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Um, those in favor? Out for our discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of an ordinance, local conversion district overlay at one thirty-two Bethel Street, ZM dash two zero two four dash zero two.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and council approve an ordinance for the local conversion district for the property located at one, one thirty-two Bethel Street.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of an ordinance, landmark overlay at one thirty-two Bethel Street, uh, ZM dash two zero two two four dash zero two.
Madam Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance for the landmark overlay for the property located at one thirty-two Bethel Street.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of an ordinance, acceptance of an easement from the Hagerstown Housing Authority.
Madam Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance of the local conversion.
Hold on, wait. Wait a minute, I got, I skipped one, I did.
Okay.
See.
Now, approve of an ordinance, local district overlay, four oh one Center Street, ZM dash two zero two four dash zero one.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance for the local conversion district overlay for the property located at four oh one Center Street.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of an ordinance, eh, acceptance of easement from the Hagerstown Housing Authority.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of an ordinance to accept a deed of easement from the Hagerstown Housing Authority for a portion of the Hagerstown Cultural Trail along West Baltimore Street. This portion of the trail was relocated to accommodate the construction of the Meredith Park Stadium.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance to establish water rates for fiscal year twenty-six.
Madam Mayor, I remove for the introduction of an ordinance to establish the unit cost of water rates for all customers as per the detailed individual rate and fee changes in the volume, charges, and fixed charges by meter size as indicated in the body of the ordinance for FY twenty-six effective for all bills rendered on or after July one, two thousand twenty-five. Water benefit fees and fire line fees will increase by three percent for inside and outside customers in FY twenty-six and become effective on July one, two thousand twenty-five. These rates and fees are necessary to meet the revenue requirement of the water fund in order to keep the fund self-supporting as determined by the two thousand twenty-four cost of service study prepared by New Gen Strategies and Solutions LLC. The detailed individual volume charges and fixed charges by meter size are indicated in the body of the ordinance for FY twenty-six. The increased rates shall be effective for all bills rendered on or after July one, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of a resolution to set the annual rate per stormwater billing fee unit for the stormwater utility fee.
You skipped one.
I skipped another one?
Yeah. I think they're getting caught on your staples.
Yeah.
It's the, um, FY twenty-six wastewater rates.
Yeah. Introduction of an ordinance, they are sticking together, uh, to establish sewer, sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-six. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance to establish the unit cost sewer rates for all customers as per the detailed individual rate and fee changes in the volume charges and fixed charges by meter size as indicated in the body of ordinance for fiscal year twenty-six effective for all bills rendered on or after July first, two thousand and twenty-five. Wastewater benefit fees will increase by three percent for inside and outside customers in FY twenty-six and become effective on July first, two thousand and twenty-five. These rates and fees are necessary to meet the revenue requirements of the sewer fund in order to keep the fund self-supporting as determined by the two thousand and twenty-four cost of service study prepared by New Gen Strategies and Solutions LLC. The detailed individual volume charges and fixed charges by meter size are indicated in the body of the ordinance for fiscal year twenty-six. The increased rates shall be effective for all bills rendered on or after July first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion.
Hi. This, this might be a foolish question to ask in public. Maybe I missed, missed something. So, July first, two thousand twenty-four, a couple of weeks ago, was the beginning of the fiscal year twenty-five year. Isn't that what these rates are for? And the one we just did, so, um, there's so much going on, maybe I missed something, so.
Yeah, these rates begin on July first, twenty twenty-five, for FY twenty-six. Um, the mayor and council, uh, had their last discussion. Uh, bring the rates forward for one, for one additional year so that we had time to completely redo the, uh, water and sewer rate model.
So we did not change any rates for fiscal year?
We only did for one year.
We already did those, um, in, they, they became effective on July first. They were done in the May-June time period. And in July, we were to bring back the rates for FY twenty-six. So rates are set essentially for two fiscal years.
Okay. Thank you.
Discussion, any more discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now, now nervous. Approve of a resolution to set the annual rate per stormwater billing fee unit for the stormwater utility fee beginning fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution to establish the annual rate of the stormwater utility fee for fiscal years two thousand twenty-six to two thousand twenty-eight. The annual rate should be thirty-eight dollars per one thousand square feet of impervious service, surface for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, effective July first, two thousand twenty-five, and shall remain the same for fiscal years two thousand twenty-seven and two thousand twenty-eight and each year thereafter unless modified by subsequent resolution.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of a resolution, national settlement agreement with Kroger Company.
Madam Mayor, I remove the mayor and council approval of a resolution authorizing approving and directing the mayor to enter into a national settlement agreement with Kroger Company to benefit the city in connection with litigation against contributors of the opioid addiction crisis. The mayor is further authorized to enter into any state subdivision agreements required to receive the city's share of the Kroger National Settlement Agreement.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Resolution, approval of the program year two thousand twenty-four, city fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, CD DG Annual Action Plan.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for adoption of a resolution approving the program year two thousand and twenty-four, city FY twenty twenty-five Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant Program, authoring the mayor to file an application for financial assistance with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, and further authorizing the mayor to execute all other documents relating to the city's Community Development Block Grant Program for program year two thousand and twenty-five, city fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve of a resolution approving amendment number one to the Joint Sewer Service Area Agreement between the City of Hagerstown and the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County Agreement and accordance with the attached resolution and amendment number one to the agreement.
Madam Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve amendment number one to the Joint Sewer Service Area Agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, and the mayor and council of the City of Hagerstown, Maryland, as described herein.
Second.
Discussion. So, to be clear, the area in question is the area highlighted on the attachment, um, in whatever this color is, aqua.
That is correct.
Um, we provide one, one other, um, direction that occurred after. Uh, county commissioners will actually vote in August. Uh, they wanted, there's a commissioner or two on vacation, they wanted other commissioners present for the vote. The amendment will only pass and become effective if both bodies vote in favor of it.
Any more discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of a resolution authorizing agreements for the Commission of Public Art with five various mural artists.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council to approve of a, approval of a present, resolution to enter into agreements for murals in the Arts and Entertainment District with following five muralists. Kristen Sandlin, Jason Tetlac, Drift Mural Company, Leonardo Morelio, and Philip Sett.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of a resolution authorizing an easement agreement with the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown, USMH, for the use of a portion of USMH property in connection with the creation of a mural.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of a resolution to enter in an easement agreement with the University System of Maryland for location of a mural on the property at thirty-two dash forty-six West Washington Street.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve our request for extension for American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, Restaurant Ready Grant Program.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve a sixty-day extension to the project completion date deadline of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, ready, restaurant-ready grant program to each of the awarded projects. The August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four deadline is not met, the grant shall be forfeited and staff shall send a termination letter. Any unused portion of the funding shall remain at the city and will be reallocated to another project or program at that time.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Authorizing a letter of satisfaction for the financial incentive agreement with, between the City of Hagerstown, Hagerstown, City of Hagerstown, Maryland, and Duvernage LLC.
Ma- madam, madam mayor, I hereby move the mayor and council to authorize staff to issue a letter of satisfaction for the financial incentive agreement between the City of Hagerstown and Duvernage LLC dated October twenty-three, two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of a motion, lease holder extension with Maryland Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation.
Madam Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the attached holdover extension letter with Maryland Department of General Services for a lease at two dash six North Potomac Street in Hagerstown, Maryland.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Approve of a motion to participate in a PFAS research project with the Interstate Commission on the Potomac River Basin, ICPRB dash DWSPP.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for approval to participate in a PFAS research project with the Interstate Commission on the Potomac River Basin, which requires twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars for sample analysis. An overview of the PFAS study is detailed in the proposal attached to this motion.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Approve of a proposal for Community Legacy Upper Floor Market Rate Housing Grant for thirty-four West Franklin Street for Cosner Business Services LLC.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve the attached proposal for the Community Legacy Upper Floor Market Rate Housing Grant, the project at thirty-four West Franklin Street, with project costs of one million, five hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. Staff are authorized to issue a letter of commitment to Cosner Business Services LLC for a grant in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. No funds will be dispersed until staff have verified that all work in the development plan is completed to the city's satisfaction and the total project cost expenditure requirements have been met. Funding for this grant will come from the state fiscal year twenty-one Community Legacy Upper Floor Market Rate Housing Grant.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to congratulate, uh, Troy and Carrie, this is a, you deserve this.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of Government Relations Engagement Agreement with Compass GR Partners.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of a government relations engagement agreement with Compass GR Partners. As stated in the scope of work, Compass Government Relations Partners LLC will represent the City of Hagerstown on legislative matters agreed to between the parties. The term of the agreement is August one, two thousand twenty-four, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, with fees of forty-eight thousand dollars to be covered in general fund legal department operating budget.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve of purchase of recycling totes from Ray Rig Pacific Company.
Madam Mayor, I remove for mayor and council approval of the purchase of five hundred and forty blue recycling totes of various sizes from Ray Rig Pacific Company in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Discussion.
Madam Mayor, um, while this particular purchase, um, is probably considered routine, I believe that there's a bigger issue that this council needs to consider, um, in the trash collection process. Um, I know that the current agreement with the vendor pretty, pre, you know, predates me. Um, but I'm not sure from, since the, since the imposition of this new policy of how trash is picked up here in Hagerstown, as evidenced by one small example of the gentleman that spoke during the business comment, is the most appropriate way for the city to be managing this particular issue. And personally, I just think that it's not working. Thank you.
Any more discussion? I will, no. Those in favor?
Well, I, I'm just, maybe I'm a little confused, other than the fact, the color. I don't, I don't know that I have a huge issue with this, but are you, I'm trying to figure out if you're, you're indicating that we should get rid of recycling or that we should collect it in another manner? Or that we should maybe reverse course to more than once a week? I'm just trying to figure out what part of purchasing these would have implications on changes to how we collect refuse?
Uh, in general, uh, my comment, my comments are more geared towards the overall uh, collection process that was approved a while ago and went into place on, on or about July first, which includes regular trash, recycling trash, yard waste trash, or yard waste. In this case, for these particular totes, the, the blue recycling totes, um, one part of that general comment that I made, that I didn't get into, is that, um, general comment that I made, that I didn't get into, is that the city is providing totes for both residential and commercial, and I include multifamily housing in my definition of commercial, and I think it's creating a problem. For example, as I drove to the meeting this evening, I passed one location that has about 20 different totes lined up on the sidewalk, and they stay there all the time. I'm not sure that was the intention of the program, and so I'm suggesting that it, from my perspective, my opinion, is, need to take another look at. That's all. Does that include considering the reverse of course on including recycling as a component of trash collection? I don't, I don't have enough information to be able to answer that question today, tonight.
Any more discussion? No. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. City Administrator.
So would you like that brought back to the work session discussion with Waste Management to talk about the contract and what their?
Stay with your point.
And what their responsibilities are and that?
I mean, we can, I, they, they were the only ones that presented, and I think some of our, our options were to go to every other week, or to get rid of recycling, and so we didn't have many other options, is what I remember, but if we could bring it back for?
Sure.
Because there was no other.
My recommendation is we just have an internal conversation about it first, and try to look at what the issues are that the citizens are bringing up, and if we need to then go beyond that to talk to the vendor and so forth. But I think there's appropriate, appropriate discussions to have internally first. That's all I'm suggesting. It's fine. Internal meaning a public discussion by the council, not including the vendor. Yeah, or maybe the city administrator can review this with staff first.
Sure.
That's what I meant by internal.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. City Administrator.
Just one thing, Mayor. August 7th will be the grand opening of the Hub City Garage. It'll occur about 5:30 in the evening. That's kind of tentative right now. We, we may have a special guest coming as part of the ribbon cutting. We're trying to firm up a time for that, but it should be 5:30. Potentially, there could be a softer opening before that, but the actual true opening will be on August 7th.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
That's it. Councilmember Rocha?
I'm nothing to see with.
Councilmember Green?
Since our last regular session, there've been, it's been kind of abbreviated because we had a holiday in there as well as a conference, but had the opportunity on June 21st to both meet with Comptroller Learman, Maryland Comptroller Learman, when she was here in Hagerstown. Also, we attended the mayor's luncheon with, at the Miss Maryland Pageant on June 23rd, attended the Maryland Municipal League Conference, which I thought went very well. Of course, we had a fantastic fireworks show on 4th of July. On July 9th, we had the opportunity to recognize Duvernage Employee Recognition and had a tour of that facility, and proud to have them as a manufacturer here in the city of Hagerstown. On the 12th, as was kind of mentioned at a previous meeting, the fieldhouse topping off, very important milestone in that project. On the 15th, I attended Neighborhood's first meeting, and on the 16th was the first MML Legislative Committee meeting for this, preparing for this upcoming General Assembly Session. And last night, on the 22nd, attended the Washington County Chapter of the MML meeting and dinner. So a lot of good things happening right here in Hagerstown. Thank you.
Councilmember Bennett?
So first, I just want to thank those that came up to speak tonight, and those that kept a respectful thank you, but also just to say sorry for those who experiencing some things in our city, especially vandalism and crime and witnessing, you know, things that we're seeing. It's disheartening, and I, I get it, I see the same things too, so the notion of open your eyes, we see it, we, we're aware, hence why I asked the body if we could get HPD and Sheriff Department and Maryland State Police together at least have a discussion on what's being done and what we can do to help, as well as citizens' awareness so they can help as well, because we don't have a solution, one-stop-shop solution, so I'm still on the idea of collaboration and having awareness and discussions to see how we can move forward. And to the fishing, banning of Penguin Park, I strongly support that. The fact that we have been trying to get people to do the right thing and throwing away their fishing materials and, and do better as citizens, and it's not working, so I don't know how to go about doing that, but I definitely support the banning of fishing at Penguin Park. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Chandler?
I just want to say, I appreciate you, Madam Mayor, for providing the time to speak after citizen comments. I, I've certainly been one to ask for that, and, you know, I want to apologize to everybody that came out and was brave enough to speak. I didn't seize that moment, but I suspect everybody can understand it was a lot to digest. But I do want to say, my implication talked about collaboration and learning and understanding each other, and I think my job tonight is just to process and digest what I've heard. And going forward, my job and this body's job is to try and find a way to address these concerns, as difficult as they are. So I hear you. I'm raising an 11-year-old here in this town, and I see what's going on. I'm equally as concerned as, as everyone that spoke this evening. Thank Mr. Ian and Mr. Aaron, who are still here, everybody else that already left, thank you for your comments as well, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mackensher?
It's easier to watch the comments on Facebook, although it is difficult to digest, but when individuals, every single individual that came up here tonight had that same undertone and the same concerns for the social issues, and I say social issues lightly, that we are experiencing, and I think that of all of the things that I personally have done in this role with collaboration and with attempts at, between anti-violence and homelessness, that it, we have a lot of catching up to do, and I welcome the opportunity to talk to all the police agencies, like you said, but I think that we have to go a little bit farther than that, and I think that we need to invite the county, because I think that it is, we are a part of them, and I believe that having a joint discussion that isn't water and is the real issues that we have at, in our city and in their, in their county, I think that it is crucial for us to have that discussion with them. And just like in the words of Ernesto Oliveras, you know, the social issues that these people experience and the, whether it be substance use disorder, or homelessness, or sex workers, it is not the police department's responsibility to fix that. They can't. So we, as a body, we have the ability and we have the responsibility to make those changes, and to make them a lot more swiftly than a conversation here and there. So there's been a lot of attempts for all these years, since I got into office since 2017, to collaborate with social services organizations, and we're no better than we were back then. In fact, it's getting more concerning and more, and, and worse. And it is, I said, you hear it, you see it, when other people are coming to you like one after the other, it's just, we got to do something. That's it.
Yeah, I, I want to say, my first thing on my list was crime and unfortunate situations, and I know that everyone in, within the city looks to this body to come up with the answers whenever things like Thursday happened in our community, or the week before when there was a shooting, or the week before that, or the multiple overdoses, the multiple children that are now experiencing losing a parent and not having the things that they need. And I know they look to us, and, and what I want to say is that the place, social media is just not the place for any of us, elected officials, any of us in leadership, any of us that are heads of organizations, any of us that want to be in this and collaborate together, it's not the place to go back and forth with each other. It is very unfortunate, we all live here, we all experience and have to experience and see the exact same things. There has never been a time that I've ever said that I would not walk after dark. This is my hometown, I've been here forever. I know someone on every single block, and at this point in my life is where I'm a little like, ah, it's probably not a good idea, and so I agree, but I also think that it's not just the city of Hagerstown. We are represented by state delegates, one delegate, we're represented by state senator, we're represented by county commissioner, as well as an elected school board, and I just want the community to understand that, that it takes all of us working together. The last thing to do is to just point fingers and blame one particular person. I don't think that that works. I also don't believe that having discussions around all the problems and not putting some solutions on the table will work either. I'm, I'm here for that. I believe that we do need to have a conversation with law enforcement. Actually, I was going to ask Captain if there was anything that this elected body could do right now in order for you to change the way that you in chief do your job, and, I mean, I don't want to answer it for you, but is there a motion? Is there a head nod we could give? Is there some direction that says, you know, be harder on crime? I don't think that this elected body has that power, but Captain, could you please, could you please, would you please? Because I think that that's important, because it's constant that the mayor, the elected body, is being soft on crime, and I just want to know, is that, is this, is there a directive from this elected body?
I don't think that's the case. I think the one thing that you all could do for us in the city would be to focus on hiring more cops immediately. That's the easiest ask that I can ask right now. There's more specifics we could get into, but that's the number one thing that I'm prepared to discuss tonight.
Thank you, Captain. I just wanted to, I just wanted to clear that up, that there's not some directive from this elected body that is saying, you know, don't do this, or don't do that, also we have to look at what state ordinance, state laws are in place that have certain situations taking place, and if we want to, we have to look at the whole picture. Ethan, I appreciated your comments, because I don't disagree, and I think that a lot of times people look on the outside and think that I, that I disagree with those things that we do need law and order, and that we do need to figure out something, because homeowners, I visited multiple in the last couple of days, all throughout the city, that are very disgusted. They're disgusted with stepping over people that are outside of their houses, they're disgusted with looking outside their window and seeing someone shoot up, they're disgusted with those things, that there's not, there's things that are in place that are state, that the, that puts our law enforcement and I feel like our organizations in a catch-22, and so I don't disagree. I also wanted to say that I, I wanted, there was a, one of the MMLs, it was a Will Bowen, he's the author of A Complaint-Free World. I don't believe that people just complain, I don't believe that that's what was happening, but I do want to say, how can we turn that into collaborating? How can we take, you know, the things that are happening within our community and turn that into a collaborative effort, where we're not sitting outside and saying, it's your fault, it's your fault, it's your fault, and more so of how can we fix this together? I believe that we have to come together. I mean, it was 160 years, the ransom of Hagerstown, I feel like that is, like, a principle-wise, that's the same thing that's happening right now, it's being hijacked, and in order for it to not, it takes the people of Hagerstown to come together to put that up, you know, put up that ransom, to put up that, that thing, and that, that's safety right now, safety. Safety, I feel, is being, is being taken away, and how do we, as a collective, make sure that we save Hagerstown? And that takes all of us. I am not, I am very, very social media savvy, I've always been. If you know me, I am a mediator and a poet, I choose to document my history in that way, by collecting all of the information and pictures and putting it up there, I just won't address to a certain extent things that have to do with this elected body, and that's because it belongs to this elected body. I am not personally offended, even when my face is straight, even when my tone, I'm still not personally offended. You know why? Is because I've been, I've been here, born and raised, and I do a lot of work every single day, so I know it's not a personal attack on me. So I'm not personally offended, but I do challenge, I do challenge that spirit at times, that spirit of how are you coming towards this elected body with that type of attitude or that type of resistance? That's why my face may look like this, just for clarity. Thank you so much, and with that, we are adjourned.